Good evening. A call to order, February 10th, meeting City Council, Waynesboro City Council. Mr. Short, would you lead us in the pleasure?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item two on the agenda is adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Slope. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it five zero. Item three matters from the mayor. The vice mayor and myself had the opportunity to tour the Children's Advocacy Center this week or last week. A eye opener of what those folks do for children of abuse, various abuse. And so to see that operation and the importance of how they help to heal the wounds of those children, it's just amazing. So thank you, Mr. Wood, for setting that up for us.
Thank you.
Very informative.
My pleasure.
And then yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the read-in. I think it was sponsored by the Alumni Chapter of, let me say it right, help me, someone.
Help the singer, Fader.
I'm sorry. It was a read-in and the interesting thing about it was a lot of the children that read were from Waynesboro Public Schools. So from Winona, Westwood, Waynesboro High School. So a very nice event. That's all I have. Item four is matters from council members.
Mayor, I went to the tourism event put on by our Tourism Board and Economic Belt today over at the Best Western. We had a lot of our local merchants, local businesses, our museums there. It's the first one they've had since before COVID. And I talked to Stephanie earlier. She said she was really stressed and worried because it had been so long. She didn't know, didn't have a lot of feedback. Didn't know how it was going to go over. But by the time I got there, the place was packed. It was people from Waynesboro, people outside of Waynesboro. Our merchants were there. A lot of Waynesboro represented there. And it just shows the amount of interest that people in our area have in what we're doing in our city, how we're moving forward, how we're growing. And it was, it was just a pleasure to see everybody there, especially a lot of our city folks. The chief was over there, Chief Shaw was there, our sheriff was there, and a lot of our city works folks. So it also makes me happy to see how our city employees, our city staff interact and work with their merchants. And that all helps make us a better community.
Thank you, Jim. And I was there this afternoon. It was still, it was, yeah, you was there this morning. So, and it was still crowded. So, yeah.
For what it's worth on the, on the social media environment, I don't know if constitutes going viral, but there were tons and tons of posts on my feed today. And again, just appreciation for, for staff and the community for showing up and participating in that awesome tourism event. I just thought I wanted to share that I serve, represent council on the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. And if you've not seen it yet, had the opportunity to check it out on the csptc.org.org website. The regional housing study has been released and is available for public consumption. And just want to make folks aware that that is out there.
Somebody else? Okay, item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Comby. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item six is to receive a proclamation from the Waynesboro Historical Commission, presented jointly with RISE, honoring the election of Waynesboro's first black mayor and vice mayor. Mr. Guyer.
Evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of city council, and city staff. This is a unique situation for me, and I'm just going to go right ahead. History is made in Waynesboro, Virginia. Whereas February is Black History Month, and the Waynesboro Historical Commission is celebrating this annual national recognition with a local historical event. And whereas on January 13th, 2025, history was made when Mr. Kenny Lee was elected the first black mayor and Ms. Lori Jean Akambi was elected the first black vice mayor for the city of Waynesboro. And whereas Waynesboro Mayor Kenny Lee has always embraced public service in the U.S. Air Force, where he served honorably for 28 years and as a city councilman since 2023. And whereas newly elected vice mayor Akambi has been a prominent regional entertainer for 26 years and a small business advocate for 18 years. And whereas Mayor Lee is passionate about addressing the issues that matter most to the residents of the city. Since his election to city council, the much anticipated West End Fire Station broke ground. Economic development grew with North of Gromon set to provide hundreds of high-paying jobs. And residential development has flourished. And whereas Vice Mayor Akambi has in her recently elected position demonstrated her courage to come forward with her experiences, concerns, dedication, and commitment to the interests of the betterment of the city of Waynesboro and its citizens. And whereas Waynesboro is a diverse community and its new leadership, the mayor, vice mayor, and all members of city council and staff are dependent on the full involvement and participation of all its citizens. And where, where all members of the Waynesboro Historical Commission appreciate and honor Mayor Kenny Lee and Vice Mayor Lori Jean Akambi for their dedicated service with the city and desire that there should be a permanent record of gratitude for their community service. And now therefore be resolved that the Waynesboro Historical Commission, on behalf of the community, celebrate the public and personal accomplishments of Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Akambi and thank them for their commitment to prioritize the goals and aspirations and all that they do for the advancement and improvement of all the residents of Waynesboro, Virginia. In witness whereof, we do hereby set our hand this 10th day of February, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor Lee.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Akambi.
In preparing for the proclamation and the reception today, I reached out to every municipality surrounding us, and all were gracious to either be present today. Harrisonburg's mayor, Stanton's mayor, and council member was here, and also the board of supervisors for Augusta County. And one could not be in attendance, but send their regards. The first one is, letter is from the city of Harrisonburg, city council. As members of Harrisonburg City Council, we extend our warmest congratulations to the Waynesboro City Council on the historic election of the first African-American mayor Kenny Lee and your first African-American vice mayor Lori Jean Akambi. This moment represents a significant milestone in the progress toward inclusivity, representation, embracing diversity within your community, as well as the larger Shenandoah Valley. This is not only a call for celebration for two individuals, a council or even a city, but for all of us who share a collection vision of equality and opportunity. Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Akambi's election exemplify the ideals of democracy in action. As citizens of all backgrounds, have the power to shape the future of their city. With warm congratulations, Mayor Deena Reed. Dear colleagues, greetings from Charlottesville. As former vice mayor of Charlottesville and current mayor of Charlottesville, it is my pleasure to welcome you to the ranks of mayor and vice mayor. Thank you for making the sacrifice to serve the community. It often goes unthanked, so I'm here to thank you. Your work is vitally important. It is difficult to lead, but you all have not shied away from service. Lori, or should I say Vice Mayor Akambi, I have known you for years as we worked together to implement generational changes at the University of Virginia, changes that are currently making a difference in people's lives. I have no doubt that you will do the same for the city of Waynesboro. Mayor Lee, I look forward to working with you. Again, congratulations to you both with deepest appreciation and congratulation. Juan Diego Wade, Mayor of Charlottesville. I am proud to congratulate Mayor Kenneth Lee and Vice Mayor Lori Akambi on making history as the first African-American mayor and vice mayor of Waynesboro. Your monumental achievement is a testament to your dedication, leadership, and commitment to making Waynesboro a better place for all. I look forward to seeing you both have a positive impact on our community. As you both step into these important roles, I am confident that your leadership will inspire others and bring about meaningful change. Your work and dedication to the people of Waynesboro will undoubtedly leave a legacy, one that encourages growth, opportunity, and a shared vision for a brighter future. We look forward to seeing the incredible progress that lies ahead your leadership, under your leadership. Congratulations once again on this historic achievement. If my office can ever be of assistance, please let me know. Sincerely, Delegate Ellen Campbell, the 36th District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is to consider adopting a resolution supporting the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation's request for appropriation to support the Blue Ridge Rising Action Plan. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of council. Blue Ridge Rising is an initiative of the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, the nonprofit fundraising partner for the Blue Ridge Parkway. The purpose of the initiative is to strengthen cross-jurisdictional relationships, foster economic development within the region's gateway communities, and establish a unified regional voice. The Parkway is one of the most visited units of the National Park System, hosting 15.9 million visitors along its ridges. And those visitors, that was a 2021 number. The 469-mile ribbon of road travels through 12 counties in Virginia and 17 counties in North Carolina, connecting rural mountain communities, towns, and cities, of which Waynesboro is one. The Parkway generates approximately $1.3 billion of positive annual economic impact to the adjacent communities and is a catalyst for promoting regional tourism and is a significant contributor to regional economic vitality. Blue Ridge Rising will establish a collective regional vision that celebrates our shared culture, protects our unique natural resources, and strengthens the regional economy. Blue Ridge Rising is made possible in part by two grants from the U.S. Economic Development Administration and the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. The foundation is requesting $2.5 million appropriation from the General Assembly to enact elements of the Blue Ridge Rising Action Plan, which include but are not limited to unifying the region's voice, increasing protection of views and wildlife, expanding education and workforce development, building organizational and community capacity, and making various investments in repair, maintenance, and enhancement to the facilities of the Parkway. Foundation requests that the 12 counties and eight independent cities in the Parkway's corridor lend support to the effort by adopting a resolution communicating support for the appropriation request to the General Assembly. And this evening, council is asked to adopt that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Are there any questions regarding resolution?
Only question I had was relative to their pursuit of assistance through our federal partners, given that it's principally a federal asset.
I'm not aware of that strategy. I just am simply reacting to the invitation that we got to participate in this regard. And I'd be happy to look into that and bring back an answer. But it's a good point. And I, but I think that they're seeking to kind of emphasize the regional, North Carolina, Virginia connection.
Right. Presumably since session's almost over and the budget committees have gone their separate ways at this point, I presume they're not looking for support in this session? Do we know if it was?
No, actually, it was submitted this session. And so our timing is a little bit off, but I thought it would be helpful to send along whatever support that we could.
That helps me. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the Blue Ridge Parkway's Foundation's request for appropriation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Akambi. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Ayes have it, four one. Item eight is to adopt a resolution increasing printing and copying fees charged at the Waynesboro Public Library. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. Currently, the library charges 15 cents per page for black and white printing and copying at the Waynesboro Public Library. That fee has not been updated since 2020. And a recent calculation indicates that our costs per copy are between 22 and 24 cents. So our recommendation is that the council approve an increase in that fee from 15 cents per page to 25 cents per page. In the previous two fiscal years, we've, the general fund has subsidized that service by $750 in one year and about $850 in a subsequent year. So we're losing money on this service. And our goal is not necessarily to make money, but simply to cover the cost of furnishing the service to patrons.
Thank you, Ms. Hamp. Any questions regarding the recommendation? Okay, is there a motion to adopt a resolution increasing the printing and copying fees charged at the library?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slope. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion?
Only, Mr. Mayor, the only item that I might offer is that, moving forward, I would be interested in, for expediency and efficiency and just best use of everyone's time, if the city manager identifies through observation or through communication from staff that we are providing services at a loss to the taxpayer, that we would basically afford him the ability and flexibility, as we are with this motion, to amend administratively rather than bringing it to council.
Okay.
Not necessarily this motion, unless there was an interest in a friendly amendment.
I would be interested in amending this motion to give him that leniency. In this, in earlier discussions, we talked about the market value of like Staples or some of the other business office places. Our library is still a cheaper option, much cheaper option, so he should have a little bit of room to move within the market as well.
Just a point of order, if council member Slope is amenable to a friendly amendment to your motion.
Yes, absolutely.
Just for administrative purposes, we have to, since you made the motion, we need to make sure that Councilman Woods.
I'm amenable to the suggested.
So we want to amend the motion to give Mr. Hamp the authority to make those adjustments.
Right, so specifically for this motion, but for this specific use, for this specific item, but then moving forward through, afford him the ability to administratively make adjustments so as to keep up with inflationary cost.
But what does that cover, though? I mean?
To me, it covers, it covers a whole lot of stuff, because I mean, if, 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 from park services, it gets me back to, you know, our conversation the other day about Sunset Park and setting the fees and, and like that. And if, you know, we're not profiting off of the cost to haul garbage cans up or over at a park and pulling them and retrieving them. And so basically, if whatever the cost to not transfer that cost to the taxpayer, and so as to, again, account for the service delivery cost, that we afford the city manager the ability to amend fees administratively so as to, at the baseline, bring them up to account for inflationary cost.
So. No, I personally have a problem with that, because I don't know what that means. That just seems like it's just very blanket. And so, but maybe, and maybe, and I'm just providing more work, can you provide a list of what that could potentially cover? I mean, I mean, because it seems like the sky could be the limit.
Yeah, well, I think the idea with it is to, the reason I make it, I'm again, happy to detach it and we can bring it up as a, as a separate item. I just feel like it's, it's maybe not the best use of time to nickel and dime, if you will, for the pun, to bring over costs that are pretty.
Minimal.
Well, and it's just common sense. I mean, if, if, if the cost to deliver the service is being subsidized by the rest of the taxpayer for deliver the service, then at a minimum, the cost to deliver that service should be raised in order to account for it. So, but I'm happy to detach it.
No, common sense ain't common. And I don't.
I would, I would, I would ask that, that we consider the motion in front of us and then
So I'll withdraw my friendly amendment.
Understand a little bit more clearly. I agree with, with the vice mayor. I want to know.
Well, because the list could be
Exactly.
exhaustive. I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, if, if the cost of tires goes up, I don't want to have to bring every, every, it just seems like we're cherry picking very specific things to bring to the body to have a conversation about, you know.
Yeah.
That seems.
But I, I agree that there are things, there's normal operating costs that we don't hear about.
Right.
And, and I'm fine with that. But those things that need to come to the body, then we need to know what those things, I think, are.
We can amend the, make the amendment specific, too, just copying costs.
Well, I think, I'll just support the motion. I'll remove, I can, happy to remove my friendly amendment. And we could approach this as another angle and another, another day and time. I just thought it might be, again, for efficiency to attach it, but I'm happy to detach it.
So what if we make the attachment specifically for the library, that you can unilaterally adjust the fees for the cost of the print to make sure that we're not operating at a loss?
Specific to the library, I have no problem.
Specific to that. It ties it to what we're doing right now. It gives us a baby step into.
So I, I have a thought. If we could approve the library tonight, and then, I think several good points have been raised. How about if the staff, as part of the budget process, brings you a list of the fees? And we'll make it an endeavor so that to Mr. Short's point, we're not, in February, September, October, we'll look at them once a year as part of the budget process. And unless there's an urgent or exceptional need to take a look at them, we'll do it once a year as part of the budget.
All right. My only point is that we lost $150 because we waited a year to act, to act on it. That's my point. That sounds like a great approach.
So we'll keep Mr. Slope's original?
Yes, I think so.
I'm amenable to that.
That's a long way to get there.
That's a long way to get there.
Did I get a second on that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
I got lost, sorry.
So I guess there's no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Thank you. Item nine is citizen comment.
Yes, sir. Ms. McGuffin.
So the standard, you have four minutes. You'll see the, the lights come on. When it goes to yellow, you have 30 seconds. Ms. McGuffin, you.
I'm well versed on that. Thank you. Once again, I do come in front of you representing RISE at this time. I wanted to congratulate the mayor and vice mayor on behalf of RISE, Sharon and I. We worked hard with you guys, getting you, stretching you, pulling you, pushing you, and so proud that our children get to see what, everything we've been teaching and everything we've been talking about and being a part of your campaigns and learning how to run for office and why you were running, and just being able to see that. And I thank you all for, both of you, for making sure that you kept us in mind and kept the scholars in mind. It's very important that our children see themselves in our local leadership. And so I, I'm, we're, we're elated that you all have been put in these positions, and I will be calling you. I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, item 11, closed session. Item 11 is the closed session is authorized by Code of Virginia. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move we recess in the closed session to discuss a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community and for consultation with city attorney pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city and regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice as authorized by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 5, 7, and 8. The subject matters of the closed session are performance agreement for a local business expansion imminent domain in the city of Waynesboro versus Hopeman Land Company case.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. This requires a roll call. This requires a roll call. Ms. Bortle.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Ms. Bortle, roll call. Aye.
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 We're in closed session.
Is there a motion to return to open session and certify the closed session?
Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This requires a roll call, Ms. Porter.
I did. I second it.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Or is there a attendee?
Aye.
Captain Short?
Aye.
Captain Wood?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in open session, return from closed session. Item twelve is, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rejourn.
Thank you.